Well, let's leave the sign that we got in Iowa. Four hundred fifty seven miles. There are two, there are two signs of change. One, there should be two together. There should be one for the Geo Mont hearing and then one for Yes, sir. Although I will tell you, I'm getting a little bit nervous. Oh, he is? There he is. I just wanted to make sure I was sweating a little bit. Even. The writers' cramped room. Well, good evening. I hope everyone's doing well this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the East Porter County School Board of Directors on this Monday, August the fourth, for a business meeting. Would you all please rise to the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence?
The pledge of allegiance is the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First time we've signed up under the open idol. It was spotlighted. Likewise. So this evening, I have, um, I was talking with Mr. Eisen and Mrs. Flint in regards to Lifewise, which is an organization that's working at New York, uh, working with a Washington Township students to start with. And I know there's been some questions. Since I am not an expert in Lifewise or any of them, I asked them to come and talk a little bit about Lifewise.
Thank you.
Although I did not allow Mr. Eisen to bring his royal subject to the ground.
Very disappointed.
I also noticed the lack of a red carpet.
All right. Thank you for having us tonight. Um, I will start. I'm Bonnie Flint. I am the director of our local Lifewise program here in East Porter County. I have two children in high school at Washington Township. I have, uh, you've probably seen me because I have coached since, um, the kids have started school there. So a long time now. I don't really like to mention the years anymore. Well, yeah, so they're on their way out, but, um, have always been involved. I worked at the school. Uh, I was as technology assistant and taught some classes for a while. Um, so here, I'm beginning with Lifewise. Um, I'm going to let Rick introduce himself and then I'll play some more of our program.
Uh, Rick Eisen, I'm actually like the leadership board. It's like a school board for Lifewise.
You are clicking away.
Did I exit? And I have no idea.
Okay, go ahead. You're okay.
Yeah. Uh, former elementary principal of Washington Township, thirty-five years. And in my own mind, the king emeritus of said institution, only in my mind, apparently. All right. So, um, we're gonna just explain to you. The first question, how can this possibly be legal? Because basically what it is, is it's Bible-based education during the school day. But not in the school, but during the school day. And, um, the reason we can do that is way back in nineteen fifty-two, there was a case before the Supreme Court called, um, Zorick and Cossin. And basically what it established is that, um, religious instruction during school day would be legal only under three conditions. Uh, the first was it had to be off campus. You can't do it in the school building. And so our program is planning on taking kids off campus. Uh, for Washington Township, we have a church lined up, Faith Evangelical, it's close by. And we take them in a bus, which we are still working on. But they'll be off campus. It also has to be privately funded. There can't be any tax dollars involved with this at all. So we're soliciting donations from people, churches, organizations. So to meet that requirement. And finally, it has to be with parent permission. Uh, you, you, you have to, uh, give, sign a permission slip as a parent to allow your child to attend these classes. So nobody is going to, um, be automatically enrolled. You basically have to sign them up for it. And anytime a parent withdraws their permission, they exit, exit the program. So, in addition, I don't know if you're familiar, not Indiana, uh, further passed a law that basically said that, um, a principal shall allow, it used to be may allow. In other words, it was voluntary. But now if you meet those three conditions, it's the principal shall allow, uh, enrollment in this program. And then finally, uh, I think you passed a policy and revised it this past summer on this. It's your credit for religious instruction and release time policy, fifty-five forty-one. But basically in there, it says that students will be excused from school for religious instruction. Then it goes on to give the details of that. So as long as you meet those three conditions, basically, you're considered a legal, uh, release time religious instruction program. And that's what we're hoping to start for Washington, Morgan, and Calis. Uh, we're not quite sure when we're going to start it. It'll be when we get the resources in place and most importantly, the people. But that's our plan. So.
I forwarded you like, it was the law with it. Yeah, you're good.
Go ahead.
So how does that work? We keep it simple. Uh, we focus on the central messages of the Bible, uh, conventional themes. So, um, our core values, before I go further, um, I think we have our, have you seen our Lifewise packet? I'm gonna reference page fourteen, which just talks about, um, the character traits. Do you have, so you have one? Yeah, here, I'll, or I can continue to mark you. Love as well, or read more about the program. Not as much as a hand in the hand, but of course, you know, can only do so much. All right. Uh, so we will, that page fourteen that I was mentioning aligns with, uh, East Porter County's, um, core values. There are ten core values. Uh, and then we discuss a few more. So things like reliability, truthfulness, respect, uh, love and things like that, kindness. So why release time? This allows for more student participation. So before and after school programs are great, um, but there can be, uh, they can be inconvenient sometimes. Um, and we also anticipate more participation if we're not interfering with after-school activities as well. So who benefits? Uh, research shows that, um, students improve academically, behaviorally, uh, they're in release time programs. So we're going to do the character building in a fun way for them, um, so that the kids are enjoying the program and also learning at the same time, uh, which is, a lot of us, that's also your goal in the classroom as well. Uh, it is that it's enjoyable and we're learning at the same time. Uh, so similar to school. And reinforcing, like we said, the character development, uh, and improved mental health, uh, for our students. And also in our communities, families, businesses, organizations, all benefit from investment in, um, moral and character development.
There's also, um.
You're good. You might have hit two buttons together on accident.
As I was talking, getting some information from Dr. Case, we were trying to, to kind of figure out how else corporation would benefit specifically is that when I was principal, I knew of several families that were just kind of on the border between whether or not they were gonna attend private school or not. And, um, they really liked the education they were getting in Washington Township, but they also wanted that Bible-Christian factor that the public schools couldn't provide. And so I knew of a couple of students that actually went to, um, Victory Christian for a couple of years and then just decided the quality of, of education wasn't up to what we were offering in township schools. And, and so they came back. But I'm, I'm aware of several families that are just kind of like right on the fence between should we go to private school? Or should we keep them in Washington or in the East Porter County schools? And one of their main reasons for leaving was the lack of religious instruction in the public schools. But now with Lifewise there, there's an additional factor to motivate them to stay because there'll be that opportunity. It won't be in the school building. It's gotta be off campus. But during the school day, that they will be able to avail themselves of it. And some parents just wanna know that, that their faith is welcome in the building. And that's why I was so happy when we did the East Porter core values, which you've got two on it up there, out of the ten. We did that. It just shows that we were a school that welcomed people of faith. And we're gonna come alongside and try to strengthen that with you. So that's kind of what we're trying to do with Lifewise too, is provide religious opportunities legally during the school day that will show parents that we are a corporation that basically welcomes people of faith and are trying to make an opportunity for that to, to come about.
And so that can, like you said, increase retention of our students that might otherwise leave the school system. And of course, that pays two dollars per student. Uh, so where are we at? Uh, you might wanna know about not just our program, but the program as a whole. Lifewise, um, started in just fifteen states. Uh, we've now expanded to thirty-one. Um, and our goal is to be in a thousand communities by the end of the school year. Our specific program is, um, like we said, focused on starting in Washington Township and expanding east uh, as there is community interest. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but the community themselves had signed and are interested in the program. And then that is why we started building it. It, we didn't come in and say, hey, we're gonna do this here. Come sign up. The community does want this and we're working on the steps to provide it for them. Um, so, um, you know, we kind of covered those where they'll be. Uh, and then as we progress south, we'll also be working on facilities and transportation for those students as well. Uh, to be posted to the school, off the school grounds, um, and be able to give them as much time as possible, uh, in class with us. Uh, so you might be wondering about some potential issues. And, uh, so we're, our goal, our mission is not just to reach all of the kiddos, but also to run a program of excellence. And so that would include, um, you know, just our liability as soon as they leave the property. They're covered under our insurance, uh, the driver, the facilities, all of that. Uh, so the kiddos are covered and it is all done, um, as safely and securely as possible. Our classroom will be locked, just as it would in a school day. There are no visitors allowed unless they have already, uh, done the background check and everything like that, much like the school's process. Um, so volunteers, teachers, staff, the bus driver, all have background checks. And our driver will also undergo a drug test as well as part of regular screening. And then those are updated, um, just like teachers and staff in the building are, you know, on a regular basis. If, um, uh, so you can also, um, go online and find that as well. The link is probably in your packet too. So, uh, how do we oversee the individual teachers? Um, you know, they're, they apply, uh, it's a lengthy application and we're, you know, we'll check their background. Do they have teaching experience? Do they have experience with children and place them appropriately for elementary, middle, or high school? Let's see, what was the next one? Sorry. Oh, our schedule. Yes, thank you. Our plan with Washington, so we're working closely with the schools and what will best work for those kiddos. So in the elementary, we're going to utilize, um, recess and lunch period for the grade levels. And, uh, they'll bring a sack lunch or we'll have, um, school sack lunches and they'll eat with us on the program. Middle and high school, we will use the end of the day. So no core instruction is being disrupted, uh, it's the SRT period at the end of the day. Uh, they won't miss any mandatory curriculum, uh, or anything like that. And then again, it's optional as well. Uh, so even the kiddos that leave for vocational, they're back at two-ten when they would be released to go to our program. So high schoolers are welcome to then come on our bus and join our program if they would like. Um, so I think we're probably pretty close to our time limit. Uh, we have, might not be able to answer all of your questions, but we have a few minutes until Dr. Case tells me I need to sit down. So, uh, does anyone have any questions? I know that was probably pretty fast. Um, you know, my email and that is up here. You can always, um, you know, come and copy that down or get in touch with me through our website as well.
One question said that elementary, for example.
Yes.
What's your recess?
It's both. So we'll take them for that whole period. For example, um, if, was it fifth grade is roughly around ten-thirty-five till whatever it happens to be. We'll say eleven-fifteen. I'm not sure about what it is.
Fifty minutes.
Yeah, whatever that is. So, so they would come on the bus. We start right away. They might review, have a song, something like that. Um, I do have sample curriculum here as well, if you would like to look at that. And, um, then they will have their lunch, uh, in the classroom, their lesson, and then bring them back before the end of the period. Before the recess. So it's, it's both times.
And recess, just one hour a week. They're present more than that.
Just one for the elementary. With middle and high school, we would have a shorter timeframe. So because that gives us the fifty minutes with drive time, gives us just under about forty altogether. Um, well, we do incorporate the bus time, so, um, but about little under forty in the classroom. With, uh, middle and high school is a much shorter window. And with the end-of-the-day release time being staggered at Washington, it also gives us, because we need to be back for the first one, the first release period, and then they'll stay on the bus with us. The ones that don't go on early bus, they'll stay, um, with our staff until it's time for them to load onto their bus to go home or, uh, however they get home.
But it's just once a week.
For them, we are wanting, we're planning on doing twice a week because they have a much shorter time and that would keep, would get them up to about the same time as elementary or middle and high schools that need to be twice a week.
So would high school kids be allowed to drive like they do in vocational? No.
No. Yeah, they wouldn't.
Cause it's our liability.
Right. We wouldn't be able to cover them. Who said that, um, the students would either pack the lunch or they would receive a lunch from the school? So would that put a burden on the school if they have to send lunches? No, we spoke with the school and they're on board that they would, yeah, they would provide the sack lunches. Just like if the child was going into the, the lunch line and said they would be taking it. And they're open to gathering those for us and then we will pick them up.
We currently do that when students go on field trips.
Right, yeah, like a field trip.
But yes, it is in addition to a regular day lunch.
I have a question. Um, it looks like from what I read, there's some schools that have adopted this. And, um, and just as like an extra program, but some have actually awarded academic credit. Are you guys looking into that portion of it or is this for a starting point without?
It is a possibility. I can, um, kind of just tell you at this time, no, because we're getting, we're just getting started. And there's some other parameters, but I can tell you what that would look like. So it's an AP class for high school only. There are some requirements for it and, um, as a whole, this is what the district wants. We have families wanting it. Absolutely, I'm happy to help get that going. That looks a little bit different. So for the regular program, I guess we could say, the students will have the teacher there, you know, guiding them through the lesson, through whatever character trait they're working on that day and such, similar to a classroom. That course, um, there are two, I don't remember off the top, I have the exact two topics, but there are two, um, courses that are available. And that's a five-day-a-week program. So it would be more like a class, like you would take algebra or biology type of thing. And it's actually through, um, Ohio State University. So that's your teacher, your instructor. So it is, you know, a certified teacher. The Lifewise person, the local Lifewise person would become a facilitator and they would be meeting with that student. They meet five days a week. The student does study on their own, like a remote learning with their Ohio State instructor. Does that make sense?
Then it would have to be better to make sure that it meets our requirements.
Right, yes, absolutely. With your, uh, the curriculum and such.
How do you plan to gain the interest?
We will be attending open houses next week for a community interest list. And, uh, we can u- utilize the newsletter with the disclaimer that it's not East Porter County, um, program. Uh, and put flyers in the office. Like I've done that before when I've offered financial education courses. I taught them at the library, but invited the school as well. The SEM program originally was not East Porter County's program. It was four H's program. So we had to do the same thing as well, uh, to run that program.
Is there a maximum for a minimum?
Yeah, oh, yes, absolutely. Good question. Great question. Um, others might have that as well. The ratio is roughly one adult for every ten students. What that's going to look like is minimum, we're going to have three in the classroom, even if it's less, even if we only have ten. There's three adults. So there's one teacher and two aides. Um, up to thirty, every ten after, we will add another adult aide as well. Uh, when they leave the classroom, we're teaching and two kiddos need to use the bathroom. Two adults need to go with. One will, like if somebody needs paper towel pass to them, one's gonna do it and one's gonna be outside as well, so. Um, so they will, so one would be in the restroom if someone needed assistance and then one is outside. If, so two adults would take them.
Who else is on the leadership board? I'm assuming it's not just you by yourself. Uh, good question.
What's wrong with that?
He can do it all, right? That's what retirement looks like. Uh, no, we have Mrs. Wood Small here with us today. She is also on our leadership board and we are looking to grow that and other people in the community. Uh, we would like a pastor of local church as well to join us.
Represent us from every school.
Yes, so we would like some reference diagnosis from Morgan and Calis as well. We're still, still looking.
So you're the director, uh, so you would hire, you're gonna hire the teacher? You're gonna hire the staff for the?
Uh, I hire everyone. Uh, the board, our teachers, our volunteers, our bus driver, yes, under the direction of the Lifewise administration. So they will approve the paid staff first and then we'll go through our interview process. The board, I can add directly. And, um, yeah, the volunteer is similar to the paid staff as well.
Well, my concern is that it isn't a local program. Uh, that it does seem like it's trying to get into every state and every district, which to me would make more sense of, I mean, we're a small community, it seems like, why wouldn't you be doing something that's like local instead of? I mean, you know what I mean? So my concern is that, you know, it's so big. Is it for profit? It is not. It's a not-for-profit.
I think what Lifewise tries to do is in going national, they just started out in Ohio a couple of years ago. And it was just like local school districts in Ohio. What they found was that when they developed their own curriculum, uh, it kind of standardized what core values were gonna be studied and how they were going to be studied. I mean, I've been to a couple of classes and they give the teacher a lot of freedom how they're going to teach that. But it would be like a curriculum guide where here's, and that's on that page fourteen where they list like one year's.
Well, and I have, I tried to search for this myself. Um, this is actually the most amount of the curriculum that, that I've seen because for some reason, I feel like when you look at the website, it is not transparent. And that was, it was concerning to me because I looked for the information myself and, and I couldn't find any of what you guys have, you provided. So I didn't know if like each local community and this is, you've made this or this is the curriculum, the programs.
This is the programs. Uh, happy to pass around. You're welcome to, um, look at our examples. So these would be the core values that they, that we focus on. And now it is adapted though to the kiddos and the year that they're in. So for example, we have a one, three, sorry, one, two, three, and four-year program. And that's kind of tailored towards when they enroll. So a fifth grader, you're only gonna have one year with them. That's at the elementary level. You will have one year with them before they'll move up to the middle school curriculum. Now, I would still work on the core values, but it is designed to touch all of them if they are in there for four years. If you have less time, then it is laid out to where some of them, we'd skip over them just because of the time. You'll have fifth grade is only gonna have one year in the program before they move to middle school.
And then what happens if a student, what happens if a parent signs their student up, but their student doesn't want to go? Do they have to go that day or like how are they gonna be accountable for where the students are?
Same thing as what happens when they don't wanna go to school.
Right, they are enrolled. Uh, we will be taking attendance before and at the end of the program and providing that to the schools. So that student is with us during the class time and then, um, we'll make sure that they're returned as well. So we're gonna take twenty students away, we're bringing twenty back. Uh, they are not able to be released for, from our program. So if they had a doctor's plan in that day, then they would need to stay in school that day. And we'll, we'll be working with the school, uh, you know, each day to say, okay, this is what we have. And then they'll let us know if a parent sent in a note, but perhaps forgot to notify us that he's not attending today because he's getting picked up to go to the dentist.
The, the parent can withdraw at any time though. That's, that's gotta be a decision the parent makes. But anytime they can withdraw their permission.
Or if the child decides, like if the child decides they don't wanna go anymore.
And they can convince their parents, yeah.
Yeah, and we can, we'll open communication with the parents. But, yeah, it is, it's the parents controlling them, then they're signed up.
So they're gonna be missing recess and we're, and we're about to get some new recess equipment in there to inspire people that wanna be at recess, so. What about, um, I saw on here, on your questions and answers about the wheelchair. Um, I did have questions about if a student has an IDP.
They can enroll in our program.
And then behaviors, I saw on here that there is so, I saw this, let's see. Um, the policy of remind, relocate, remove, and return to the school. So does that mean you'll just bring them back if they're misbehaving and then they won't, they won't be allowed to time anymore or?
It's, it's progressive. Uh, and if there's a lot, then potentially, um, but that's part of the redirect. Perhaps move their terror, much like in the classroom. Um, if someone keeps bugging their neighbor, well, maybe, let's see if we can sit over here today. Or that's also a part of the job of the aides is they notice something that they can go and say, you know, help with, help that student to pay attention, maybe not bother my neighbor because I didn't realize that I was bothering my neighbor, uh, or, you know, the redirection there. So, yeah, it's, it's progressive, sounds much like detention, right? You get, maybe you get five minutes on the wall today, but you keep continuing the behavior, you get ten minutes. You get, maybe you get five minutes on the wall today, but you keep continuing the behavior, you get 10 minutes next time. And then finally, maybe you have to completely miss recess because you continued the behavior.
Look, the people that I see in the room that are, that I see, I, I trust, Jill, like, how many are on the board? Who else is on the board?
It's us three at the moment, yes. So we would like preferably a board of five to nine. And so the rep, if we have a couple more representatives from Morgan and Couts, that would be wonderful.
But your intention is to kick it off at Washington, then you're hoping to be able to do it by October? I want to hear you say, you don't know, you have no idea.
We're, if things fell in place really well, but I, I think we might need to stretch back a couple of months so that we can provide a quality program from the start.
You have students that have signed up right now that already?
I have not opened enrollment until I have a teacher in place. So, yeah, no, so we're just gathering interest at the moment, which is what we would do at the open house is see who would like to sign their parents up so that I can reach back out to them when it is open. All of the positions are open on our website for people to apply, you know, to volunteer or work with our organization. But the student enrollment is not yet.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I have another question. How much interest, how many people, like to move into more than a house or just start at Washington, like how many families are?
Oh, how many need to sign the interest? It was 40 to just get started before. And then, so there's a 10 step process and we're in step nine, 10 is launch. So the beginning process, the steering committee gained the community interest, which were 40 signatures. We actually have over 100 and that is all free community. We get 200 now, okay, thank you for that.
Is it free to join?
It is, it is free for the children and that's part of our fundraising is there's a cost for the program. So we will ask for sponsors to sponsor the students at $30 a student for the year. So we will be looking for, for those sponsorships.
I have a question, and I don't know if this would be a question for you guys or Dr. Case, but since there is an Indiana Code 20-33-2-19, do they need board approval? Because there's already state law that says that.
No, no, this is information.
Okay, I was going to ask because, I mean, I know there's like, you know, different churches in the area, different pastors in the area, things like that, that might want to form like a smaller group perhaps, or maybe, you know, something else. So do they still have to come out and present to the board or is this just extra, just to tell us more about the program?
This is just to tell more about the program because questions, as long as it's provided by a church, association of churches or religious instruction associated incorporated under the Indiana law, this is just informational purposes.
We'd like your approval.
Well, I just, I just, I know that the questions are going to be coming from like maybe like smaller groups that might want to, you know, let's say it was like a Muslim group or some, you know, some other religious, you know, where they might want to do something maybe.
Not if they know how much work's involved.
So, I mean, but even though, I think that even just like if a parent wanted to get together with, you know, a small group and have, do they even need that? The, the parent's discretion. And we have Indiana law that supports this. And it seems like any parent could fill out paperwork and just say, hey, my child's going to be picked up by this, you know, religious group. And these days, and as long as it aligns with, you know, not, you know, the 120 minutes, keep over 120 minutes per week and those kind of things, that they would be able to do that as long as they just through it through administration. Is that correct?
As long as it's set out, provided by the church association of churches and meets what the state sets as guideline.
Right, meets what the state says, not necessarily like aligns with our values, because it's not all the banking.
We, we have to follow the law.
Right, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks again. I'm sure we have your information if we have any more questions to come.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay for the board meeting.
Oh, wow, don't look over there right now.
So the next item on the agenda is time for a public input on the end of item. First, time for comments on business meeting, time for comments on the GO bond. There are, no one signed up for the business meeting. Does anybody want to speak on the item? Okay. So now, next item is a hearing on the GO bond. We need to hold a project and preliminary hearing on the proposed project. And if you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you sign in on the sheet here. I see one, Mr. Jim Towney has, anybody else certainly recognize those individuals. And at the hearing, you will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. And the notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as we duly acquired. And the first preliminary determination hearing was held on July the 14th, 2025. And at this time, I will ask the Dr. Case, explain the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. McQuaid. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-26-7-37, the Forest School Corporation may spend more than $1 million to build, repair or alter school building that will be financed by a lease or bond. It must hold a public hearing at which explanations of potential value of the project to the school corporation and community are given. Similar, similar, similarly, there we go. Pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1 dot 1 dash 20 dash 3 dot 1, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt the resolution of the preliminarily determined to issue bonds or enter in a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of a non-controlled project. These public hearings and adoption of resolutions are at the very beginning of the legal process. These resolutions establish the maximums, financial terms for the proposed project.
The, we will now hear again from Dr. Case about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
So East Porter has had a practice of issue GO bonds in an effort to help offset the transfer of funds from the education fund to the operation fund. As a district, we've been able to reuse that amount of education fund transfers from 15% to right around 7% right now. Our GO bonds will be used for renovations and improvements, including site work, security improvements, the installation of solar arrays potentially, and the purchase of buses, equipment and technology.
Now, we will hear from Baker Tilly, Municipal Advisors LLC, our municipal advisor, about how the proposed project will be financed as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sean McGill. I'm a senior manager and municipal advisor with Baker Tilly. Had the pleasure of working with East Porter County School Corporation for quite some time now. This presentation, this information that you're about to receive is identical to the information that my colleague Jason Tansel presented on July 14th. So with that, I will run through the following maximum parameters and estimates that are included in the authorized documents that we have issued this evening. But any point you have any questions, there's no such thing as an interruption, please just let me know. And then, of course, I'll break at the end to make sure that all of your questions are answered. Included in the resolutions is a maximum marling amount of $5 million. Subtracting out cost of issuance and very conservatively estimated underwriter's discount, we estimate that on the very worst day, approximately $4.8 million would be available for projects around school. The maximum repayment term included in the documents is seven years. However, we estimate that no longer than five years would be needed to meet the financial objectives of the project as well as the school corporation that has those that communicated to us today. Based upon a 5% interest rate or what we consider to be close to the maximum, I think we've set the maximum at 6%. Based upon a 5% interest rate, we're estimating approximately $813,000 of interest cost. Today's interest rate on a five-year bond is 3.03%. So we would assume that would be closer to the $480,500 mark down from that $813,000. We always like to be ultra-conservative when creating these maximum parameters because of course you can operate underneath those, you cannot exceed those without going through another process. The maximum repayment, again, included for flexibility, is just over that $5 million. That would allow you to repay these bonds potentially in one year if you absolutely wanted to. Based upon the land as we understand it today and the outstanding debt service that, that exists today, which we'll look at here in a second, we feel like that, that, that payment level would not be necessary. It's been communicated to us that there's no desire to increase the school corporation's either debt service rate or levy. And so that the, we've structured the repayment to do just that. Next slide, please. Take a look at the school corporation's total tax rate, where it's been historically in 2020. You're up around 94 cents due to assessed value growth. And really maintaining that, that debt service tax rate or levy, depending on the year, we've seen a gradual decline down to about 81.5 cents where we are today. So depending upon assessed value, which of course we know when we issue the bonds, we can really tailor the repayments, meet the goals of the school corporation, whether it's maintaining the levy. Next slide, please. This slide shows the outstanding debt service of the school corporation prior to the issuance of these bonds. So you can see we have total payments in 2025. Each colored bar represents a different, different bond or debt instrument. Total payments equal about $8 million and when we see a step down as we do in '26, '27, again in '28, and then of course after '23, when all existing debt is repaid, those represent opportunities where you could potentially issue a bond, incur some type of debt instrument to finance projects around the district without disrupting the tax rate from historical levels. So as we move to the next slide, you can see those gray bars now represent all of the existing debt. The blue bars represent the anticipated payments on these general obligation bonds. And then the orange bars represent a little bit of reserve allocation that we've left, assuming that the school corporation proceeds with issuing housing school fund bonds every year. That pretty much does it. As you see, we, we've maintained step downs in 2027 and 2028 to provide you with opportunities to continually supplement that operations fund to pressure off the transfer from education. And I believe the last slide in here simply shows the general obligation bond and capacity of the school corporation. Public school corporations are limited in the amount of direct debt that they can incur. This would be general obligation debt. These financings are outside of it, but that's another conversation. So you take the most recent certified assessed valuation, currently at approximately $1.5 billion. You multiply that, or you divide that by three and multiply it by 2%. So your total general obligation debt limit is $10.2 million. You subtract out all of the outstanding general obligation bond principal, which is about $2 million. You see you have a total bonding capacity of $8,173,000. After the issuance of $5 million of bonds, that will decrease to $3,173,000. And then as you repay the bonds, that limit increases accordingly. That concludes my prepared presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
But why are we seeing almost a billion dollars difference in net gross assessed valuation?
Uh, that would be homestead deductions primarily. So there's the gross assessed valuation, which would be the, the market value of, you know, all of the property that comprises the school, within the school corporation's district. And then the net assessed valuation, which would be the value of harm which tack, your tax. That of course accounts for things like deductions and certain benefits.
I think we can ask those questions, we have a resolution at this point. Thank you. Of course, you can be around for questions, but we're going to now open it up to the public hearing. Remember, if you're here to speak and you're on here, we'll give you certainly an opportunity to speak if you're not on here. But we ask that we limit it to three minutes and avoid being repetitive. So I have the sign up sheet and I would ask that Mr. Towney present itself and?
Yes, um, as some of you know, as a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chair, I've taught in this corporation for a long time. All of my children have graduated from this corporation. And often my capacity has been as the lead negotiator in our collective bargaining process. I wear a different hat right now and I heard Dr. Case say this, I was going to say this, so let me toot your horn and say thank you. Reducing your borrowing and transferring from the education fund from 15% down to 7% helps you take care of teachers and you work hard to do that. Thank you. This is one of the creative things that you can do and you're doing it. So even though I'm helping to fund the repayment, I don't have a problem with that. I like that direction, that my house mortgage is not going down quite that quickly. But I understand the logic behind it and I know that teachers will receive some benefit and that helps the students receive a benefit. So thank you for being willing to be creative, think outside the box, however you want to word it. And that's my message is thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towney. Anybody else like this week? Then I'm going to call on Mrs. Venus to, can you please summarize the project resolution?
Project resolution is required, the school is planning to spend more than $1 million for building. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance, establishes the total project cost. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
Well, at this time, I would ask, could I have a motion and a second to adopt the project resolution? So moved by Mr. Martin, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Turpstra. Any discussion?
I have a question. Have we looked into any other ways that we could reduce the transfers from education to operations? Besides doing, because this is a GO bond, correct?
Correct.
We've done a GO bond in the past.
Correct.
But have we looked into any other avenues in which, you know, other than the GO bond to?
So we have gone through and done some cost savings from operations, which has allowed us to do that. One of the biggest challenges that we're going to have this past month, we received a 17% increase in our utilities. So we are going to see that. In order to do that, we could look at solar, would be one potential. Another option to do that that would reduce it is considering a referendum, which I know is part of the conversation that the board is looking at as part of the goals for this year. Just having that conversation and discussion. Any other questions, discussion items? Good enough.
I have another question. The last GO bond we took out, what, do you know roughly what year that was and what was, what we spent? Like, do we have any, this might be a better question for you. Do we have a, you know, an evaluation of past expenditures with that other GO bond?
Evaluation?
Like, no, like, do we have, not, I don't, I guess that's the wrong term, but just do we have a line item list of things that we have spent the previous GO bond on?
Yes, it's approved by the vice president.
No, I mean, do you have something like that that you could provide to us?
You just want a list of what we signed on?
Yeah, just to, just to be in the know of what, because I think that, it's not against the GO bond by any means, you know, that we need to probably even want to reduce the transfers and things of that nature. But just knowing what we spent down in the past, because I know, this is just off the top of my head. You know, when I had asked about lockers, the locker painting, you had said that it was from the GO bond. And it was like, well, you know, my questions were, is this a completely necessary project, things like that? So I just want to ensure that, you know, that we're looking at it from an objective point of view. What, when we do get these bonds approved, like are we just treating them as, well, we have the money and we can spend it? Like, are these necessary things and that sort of thing? So just, it would be nice to have something with, where, you know, obviously not tonight, I'm just asking about it tonight. But, you know, can we, is that something that we can look at?
Sure.
Any other questions? If not, then I'll call for questions. It has been moved by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Turpstra, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, motion passes six zero. Now, this is Venus. Could you please summarize the preliminary determination resolution? Could you please summarize the preliminary determination resolution?
The preliminary determination resolution is required when a school is planning to pay more than a certain amount of funding in the facility. It contains the total project cost, two years' warranty, and these terms, other financial terms such as the estimate, principal, and allowance.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the preliminary determination resolution? So moved by Mr. Martin, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Turpstra. Okay, any discussion in this particular item? If not, then I will call the question. All in favor, the motion, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, motion passes six zero. Okay, Mrs. Neves, you're up again for the next resolution.
This resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to the closing of the bonds. It is required by federal tax law in order to preserve the school corporation's authority to reimburse itself.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the reimbursement resolution?
Summer.
Moved by Mrs. Turpstra, is there a second?
I'll start it.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any discussion? Plus you.
My only question would be, so what, in the new legislation that is passed, what part of what we're doing may not be protected?
Well, debt service, so the $300 credit.
Sure. So I believe what you're referring to is the bottom line credit that homeowners will be seeing in, beginning in 2026. This, this amount is going to be the lesser of $300 or 10% of the net property tax bill. At this time, there's, we don't believe that the debt service fund is going to be protected. That may change between over the next three months before we issue the bonds. So we'll make sure that based on whatever guidance we're seeing at that time, that, that we'll build that into our projections and make sure that the administration is aware of the implications of that. Currently, debt service is protected, meaning that all circuit breaker losses are recognized in the operations fund. There's nothing currently in statute that would say that, that it is also protected from this credit. So what that would mean is simply that you would receive less property tax revenue for the same levy. And that while 2026's levy may be the same, the way that they calculate the levy, it may be higher than it otherwise would be in 2027 and they're have to make up for that loss of cash the following year.
So they have the provision in to try and compensate the difference?
No, no, they have not, not currently, no, no.
So we have a ballpark of what that could look like if everybody's $300 credit can, or whichever is less?
We could certainly calculate that, but at this time I don't have an accurate figure. It would be, it would be a very conservative figure based on the number of home states and assuming everyone receives 300, which, which of course would not be the case. So we can-
This $300 is in addition to the current home debt credit, right?
Correct, yes, and in addition to circuit break. So those that they're 1% cap would still see all of that reduction. And then the additional $300 or 10%, whichever.
So who was advising the state when they decided not to protect that?
Not us. There has been some conversation from legislators talking. Since this has been passed, they may reconsider that next time.
Which would be two-year. Unless they call a special say.
Short session before that.
All right, any other discussions or questions? Seeing them, I'll call the questions, but moved by Mrs. Turpstra, second by Mrs. Moore. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion passes six zero. Next, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of item 3A approval of minutes, work session of August the 4th, 2025, item 3B approval for the business meeting on August the 4th. In addition, is the financial matters payroll from August the 4th, 2025 business meeting, item D, financial matters claims list on August the 4th business meeting, and the approval of the personnel report. Good night. We entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, and 3E.
So it's-
Moved by Mrs. Moore, is there a second?
I'll start it.
Second, Mrs. Star. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Were all board members permitted to attend this meeting on the last meeting that's committed?
For which?
Are we, are we approving the minutes from last Monday?
From the work session?
Yeah.
Yes, all board members were permitted to attend.
They were permitted to attend?
Questions, comments? Removed by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. Star. All the question, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, motion passes six zero. How Dr. Case is any of the approvals under the personnel report here?
We do have one with us this evening, and that is our new PE teacher at Morgan Township. Derek has joined us. I know that he was here, is it a month ago already? For the basketball president on there? So we're excited to have him join us at Morgan Township, but it also looks like he brought a couple of,
yeah, basketball players with him today. They're my many me's, Braxton and Liam. So I thank you for everything and we look forward to becoming part of the family. So thank you.
Any other words of wisdom you might have, or your voices?
So Braxton's going into fifth grade and Liam will be going into second grade. And they're, they're, they go to Crown Point right now. They live in Crown Point. So we're looking forward to, to seeing what the Porter County Conference is all about. So yeah, that's, that's definitely what we're looking forward to, it's something special, so. But I, I do want to thank Mr. Dr. Case and everyone that has been involved in the hiring process, both for the coaching position and the teaching positions. It's a real honor, truly is, to be a part of this. And we want to thank all the board members as well. We're excited. We had a great summer with basketball and now we're looking for carrying that over into the academics and the teaching aspect, so. We're definitely thankful, so thanks again.
Thank you, welcome, welcome boys again.
Thank you very much.
Well, now we have action items. And first action item is approval to increase athletic spectator ticket prices by a dollar as proposed. Do you have the cross, your printout or certainly online? Discussion there, Dr. Case?
So yes, actually in front of you, you have what was initially proposed in what was part of a work session. Oh gosh, it would have been in the month of July, I believe, that we had a work session over this. So late last week, after we had sent the information out to the board, the athletic directors, and I believe I put it in your information, wanted to make an alteration or have another consideration to be thought about. And that has to do with trying to encourage and help families. They understand, we understand the necessity of increasing it because of, meaning they are, are issues. However, over the past couple of years, we have heard from some of our families about the fact that it's getting too expensive to take, if you've got larger families, to go for this. So they had presented something in, to be late last week. And so we really haven't had too much time to talk about it. But their, their goal is if a elementary or middle school student is to come with a paying adult, if they're a Couch Kids, they would get into Couch for free. If they're Washington Kids, they get into Washington for free. If they're Morgan Kids, they get into Morgan for free. Now, if it's a Morgan child at Washington, they have to pay. Simply, but it's, it's a way to encourage students to come in. Also, they were looking at trying to decrease what it would cost for a family pass, simply so that if you've got six or seven kids, you're not breaking the bank to go to a basketball game. And so what they are looking to do is to make a little bit of a change to it. So instead of the family price being, what they have, $350, what we're looking at is that that family price would be $250. Because that way, basically it's mom and dad buying a pass for two of them. And then if they come through, they would be able to, their kids, give them for free. So that would be the recommendation for an individual pass. They also look at reducing that to $125. But everything else would pretty much stay the same on that particular part. And again, just trying to get that. Now, if a student wants to get in, that's a high school, they have to present their badge. Their student ID. And yes, we will get the information out, keep your, keep your student IDs.
Don't trade them for not being through.
Because we do know that some students currently do have some misuse for the student ID. And, but if we get that out there and do that. Normally, I would recommend that the board would table it to give us opportunity to talk about it and get it worked out. However, we do have some events that are taking place this week. And so in order to not confuse parents with different prices and all that kind of stuff, I would just ask that the proposal would be recognizing that if students bring their IDs in, they get in for free. If they're with their paying adult and they are attending that school from middle school and elementary, the student would get in for free. And then changing, and the reason I thought that we're looking at changing the family pass, because their initial proposal was just a change for a spouse, a husband and wife pass or a spouse pass. It's just, let's make it a family pass. That way, if it's a family pass for the $250, well, they've got the kids, they need it. Does that make sense? I know I talk a lot.
Can you clarify, would it just be if a parent took them or could a grandparent take them and pay and then?
If they are with a paying, paying adult that is taking responsibility for that child, yet they would get in for free, even if it was an aunt and aunt uncle? Or, because one of my concerns that I talked with the principals about is what are you going to do for the parent who just drops the kid off at the sidewalk? They pay the student price.
Have you guys considered looking into like tying this back into families that fall by for reduced lunch?
The difficulty with that is there are only two or three people in the district who has access to that, simply for purposes. However, I will tell you that when special needs are made, or made known to us, our schools have worked with them to get ways to help them compensate. Like we have some of our parents who have worked events in order to get passes to help with that. And that's one of the things that we are looking at too, in reducing that cost. But yet knowing that our expenditures, our expenses are going up too, trying to make that coverage.
Well, at this point in time, I'll certainly entertain a motion to approve the increased athletic spectator ticket price as amended.
Sure, yep, we'll run a dollar for the ticket, but then 250 for the family, 125 for, let me, before I say that, I want to make sure that that's the right number. Yes, 125 for the individual. And students get in for free if they've got their ID or they pay the adult at their home school.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion. So moved, then Mrs. Turpstra, is there a second?
I'll start it.
Second, then Mrs. Star. Any other discussion? And I'll call the question, all those in favor of approval to increase athletic spectator ticket price and as amended. Six and five by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, motion passes six zero. Next item is approval of Washington Township Summer Rec League donation.
So we are asking the board to approve the donation. We've been working with our Washington Township trustee and rec league, where they have made some donations to help with the purchase of a new baller at Washington Township.
Well, do I hear a motion for approval of Washington Township Summer Rec League donation? I, I think Mrs. Moore can go first. Is there a second? Mr. Martin, would you like to say it? Second by Mr. Martin. Any discussion? Comments? Seeing them, we call the question, all those in favor of approval of Washington Township Summer Rec League donation signify by raising your hand. Motion passes six zero. Next item, second reading and approval of policy 6110, 5372, 4320, and 4018, and 1300.
So the policies in front of you, yes, this is second reading. Some of these just have some minor wording changes, like the board meetings has to do with time. Animals in classrooms had to do with no longer being able to accept or ask for their card transfer. Sorry, I don't remember exactly what that specific language was on there. But again, they were just minor tweaks that needed just making current.
Questions, comments?
Did we get the discrepancy that we had the work session with the IHSA's new rules for sports? Did we get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I, I don't know if the athletic director shared it with all of you, but I will send what they sent.
Okay.
Basically, it's, there are some restrictions. The people that have the difficulties, it impacts negatively seniors the most. Because basically they don't get that through transfer.
Any questions, comments? Do I hear a motion for ordering policies as discussed?
We'll make a motion to approve policy 6110, 5372, 4320, 4018, and 1300.
And moved by Mrs. Turpstra, is there a second?
I'll start it.
Mrs. Star. Any other discussion, comments?
That was the student attendance one was another policy that was listed there. I did have a question about that. There were some constituents that had brought up some concerns about how student attendance at some of the elementary campuses wasn't always handled the same way at the different districts. For example, at Washington Township, and I know that I brought this up several months ago when a parent had contacted me, but there was, for student attendance, if students missed a certain amount of days at Washington Township, they had to do detentions to make up that time. That wasn't being followed at, I think it was Couch. Is this student attendance policy, I don't see anything about detentions in here. Is that, has that been, or is this going to be the policy? Or are the campuses going to be doing, like, sort of their opening when it comes to making up time for?
This is the policy for the whole district.
Okay, so there's, so the detention part would be gone?
Detention will be part of student handbook, but that's not necessarily the policy. Because discipline follows along with the discipline policy. This is set up to be mandated with what the- This is, um, set up to be mandated with what the state, uh, requires for us to do.
But it, it seemed like there was some overlap with the discipline part because it was being explained to the parent that it wasn't a disciplinary action, but rather time to be made up at school for missing out on instructional time. So they'd have to be doing, this is a parent who wanted to take their child on, they needed to take their child out of town, um, or, and they, you know, build up their paperwork and everything. Um, so my question would be, you know, like, how does that fit in with our student attendance policy? Because it sounds like it was more of a student attendance policy rather than a disciplinary policy.
So in our handbook, um, thank you, Mrs. Schneek for bringing it up. It actually does talk that, um, students are permitted one unexcused absent semester before being designated, um, as extreme absenteeism. And so students may be assigned detention for hours for each class miss.
Can you read that one more time? The first part, it's one or five?
For the un, for an unexcused absence, uh, our handbook says it's one.
Okay. So after one, but what about for family, um, vacation times at three days or?
Four?
Yeah, it's four. It's up to four.
Okay, but then it's up to?
But we're discour, we're discouraging them from taking that time out because of the, um, the state has really, um, coming down on making sure kids are in school.
And I would like to see more of that, that part of that at least reiterated in the student attendance policy just because, you know, parents are asking questions about attendance and things like that. They don't always know the, um, I, I believe, again, this was months ago, but this parent really taken off guard without being told that their child was missing, um, taking an additional day of school. And then that would have been eight hours of detention, so like two weeks after school detention. I, I can't remember the specifics, but it was, it, it seemed like a lot, especially for a first grader, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, I remember even in my, uh, elementary principal days, uh, it's very difficult to get kindergartners and first graders that particular part, but we don't have control over the parents. So I actually offered my parents to sit in their place and I would take their kid out on the playground.
Okay, any other questions? I'll see, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the approval of policy six, one, one, zero, five, three, seven, two, four, three, two, zero, four, zero, one, eight, one, three, zero, zero. Signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, names? One name. Motion passes five, one. Now, we have, uh, item D, which is the second reading and approval of policies four, three, seven, zero, four, two, two, zero, four, zero, three, zero, three, zero, one, two, one, one, zero, two, and four, two, zero, four.
All these policies in front of you are new. Uh, these are policies that we did not have as a school district before, uh, and that's why I've separated them off. But, uh, we just present them to you as, uh, well, as written, as discussed and through the conversations that we've had through work sessions and such.
There's an error on that, that four, three, seven, zero, it should be four, three, zero, seven.
What were that?
Yeah.
What, what, just then, four, three, zero, seven?
Policies four, three, there's some of the titles as well.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, the policy's four, three, oh, seven.
I haven't known that just because we listed out so many other things. We want to include watches, digital watches. I mean, it says using any electronic device which is portable and capable of providing data communicating. Nowadays, that can include watches. We list everything else out, we want to add watches.
A teacher asked us if we would add watches.
That is to the board's discretion. The challenge is when you're looking at watch, uh, is the expectation for the teacher to have everybody reach their wrist out and show the watches as they walk through the classroom.
Smart watches, is what we're referring to.
I, I know what you're, yeah. But, um, without going through, there are watches that look like smart watches that are not what, that are not smart watches. And so the past practice, because the school district has not allowed cell phones in the room, they have just gone through, and if it has become a distraction in the classroom, then they are taking that at that particular point in time. Because by definition, they would fall under here as opposed to, uh, delineating them specifically. Because the concern is if you delineate it specifically, what are the expectations then walking into a classroom? Because if you see a cell phone, you take the cell phone, tell it, so on and so forth. And so if we want to do watches, then the question that I would ask is what is the expectation of enforcing watches because you've got watches that are, um, that look like that, that aren't necessarily smart? Because I will tell you, we've had an issue last year where, um, we had a student who wasn't necessarily a smart watch, but was a smart watch. And so therefore she lost it because she was playing with it in her classroom. But then, um, the parents were irate simply because they have that child wearing it because it's like, uh, Apple tech. So this way they didn't know where their child was. Because they were tracking it during the day.
So for clarification, as the policy is written, the teacher would have the right to ask the child to leave the watch in their locker during their class period.
It would fall under the?
And they would fall under this policy, but then it does not require teachers to police who has a watch on if they choose that it's not.
The way that I'm interpreting it, yes.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, it states devices that provide data communications, so it's disruptive.
And then that's?
So, so what do we say?
Leaving it then?
But watches are, are not just specifically spoken out.
Yeah, it's still covered.
As a wireless device.
Not allowed, right, as a device that can transmit and communicate. But we're not gonna specifically call it out because then, you know, amend every time something else comes out or reading here.
And that, and this is policy, which number?
Forty-three, oh, seven.
Forty-three, oh, seven. It's at forty-three, seventy, yeah.
Yeah, that, it's, it's correct on the, um, policy, but incorrect on the agenda item.
I have another question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I was unable to make the work session and I had, we were gone, we were out of town. But policy eleven, oh, two, I'm requesting that you remove it from this list and then we take it back to work session. I had some examples of other policies there that I was not able to share because I was not at that work session.
I have the same issue, I was not at that last work session either.
So, so you could, you could make a motion to amend, but not, and you table that, yeah. I would table it, I, it needs to be acted on, but I have some examples and I don't take time tonight to try and do it. So you, you're making a motion? I make a motion to approve all but eleven, oh, two. And to, what's the word? My brain gets fried.
Table it.
Table eleven, oh, two to the work session. I saw the work session in the minutes that, that Mrs. Starr made a comment on it, but I had some other information I wanted to share and I wasn't able to share it just because I wasn't there. I'm not asking us to not do it ever, I just like to. So, that's my motion. Why don't we do, let me say, you make a motion to table eleven, oh, two. Okay, I make a motion to table eleven, oh, two. Okay, then we can go back to your, is there a second for that?
I have that.
There's a second, moved by Mr. Martin, the second by, uh, friend, uh, Mrs. Bauer, sorry. So I will call the question then, all those in favor of tabling policy eleven, oh, two, signify by raising your hand. To all those opposed to table eleven, oh, two, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, so we will move forward then. And then, uh, I need a motion to approve policies four, three, oh, seven, four, two, two, zero, four, zero, three, zero, three, zero, one, two, one, one, oh, two, and four, two, zero, four. Is there a motion? Moved by Mrs. Terpstra, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any other questions or comments?
I've got some, some comments. Um, as far as board member ethics, um, there's a lot of great, um, vague language around that. I'd also like to point out as well, the board can, um, you know, can make policies of this nature, that sort of thing, but we're not employees of the school. So, um, you know, who would be overseeing this policy and ensuring that, you know, we're following what they have deemed as what is ethical and, you know, proper ways of, you know, even refusing to play politics, that's very vague, vague language. Who would be overseeing that and how would that be enforced?
That would be, uh, by the other members of the board.
But really, I mean, as elected officials, the, the only thing that they could do is to evoke to censor certain board members, but even then, that doesn't limit our freedom of speech. If we'd like to speak at a meeting, they could publicly do that, but that would be the only enforcement that they could do. Doesn't limit our, it goes under a record, but it doesn't formally enforce any of these things. Is that correct?
I would have to seek legal advice on that particular part, but.
Yeah, I saw legal advice about it. So, I mean, I, I don't think it makes much difference to table it, but I just feel like, you know, um, there, again, there's a lot of vague language, you know, if, let's say we have a board member that goes to a basketball game and disagrees with an official's call and says something at the game, that could be considered, you know, not representing the school appropriately. Or we have somebody that's, you know, asking questions at a board meeting, you know, that could be considered all under any of these. So, I mean, we can ask the, the policy, but there's nowhere, there's no way for East Quarter as a district to enforce that.
That would just, you would be holding each other accountable for that.
Good. Of course, I guess my, my comment to it, which, yeah, I'm not real sure why we, this is an overkill policy. I've been on this board for a long time and this is an overkill policy. And it's frustrating to me that, I mean, I could, I could enumerate several different points in here. I'm disappointed that we don't at least table it and give a chance for me. I had asked for that chance, we were out of town. It's frustrating. Appreciate, appreciate your comments. Any other questions or comments?
I would agree with Bob on that. Because I was not at that last meeting, so I was not able, and I was actually told that's not permitted to be at that meeting, which was an overstep as well.
I see it differently. Okay. Any other comments, questions? It's been moved by Mrs. Terpstra, seconded by Mrs. Moore. All those in favor of policy four, three, oh, seven, four, two, two, zero, four, zero, three, zero, three, zero, one, two, one, one, zero, two, and four, two, oh, four, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, any eyes up against and two against. Motion passes four, two. Next is, uh, item E, permission to advertise the twenty, twenty-six capital project and bus replacement.
So we're just asking for permission to advertise this, friends, we're talking about the last.
Do I hear a motion to prefer permission to advertise the twenty, twenty-six capital project and bus replacement plan? Moved by Mrs. Starr. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any discussion, questions, comments?
This is just that, so every year, then, we have this list for the next three years, right? So every year it could change for the next three years.
Any other questions, comments? It's been moved by Mrs. Starr, seconded by Mrs. Terpstra. All those in favor, permission to advertise the twenty, twenty-six capital project and bus replacement plan, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six, zero. Next item is approval of health curriculum.
We're just, uh, seeking the board's approval to purchase, um, health curriculum for grade six through twelve. This is replacement, uh, a pretty old, um, traditional health book. We're looking at a very similar traditional health book. Um, we're not asking for the human sexuality component to be added. Um, that will be a supplement that the team will decide on a route to with a separate time, um, per state laws looking at. But this would be Glencoe teen health and then the medical health, which is nine through twelve. Um, we're just looking at it for a set of sixty per building, which would give enough for students in each class to have a book to have their entire time because they all take health, um, at the same time, it's on a rotation.
Okay. Well, I'm seeking a motion to approve the health curriculum materials in the second. Moved by Mrs. Terpstra, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions or comments?
How long is this good for? So how many years will this, will we have this?
We typically do things on a six-year cycle. So, um, this was kind of our off year. We're a little delayed because we lost over half of our folks that are teaching health when our P E, we had to replace our P E health folks. So the feedback, um, came a little bit later and from, um, a couple of our teachers. So some of the ones that we were hoping to hear from have left the district.
Any other questions or comments? Sign up and call the question, all those in favor of approval of the health curriculum materials, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion passes six, zero. Next item is approval of Morgan Township and Couts cross-country overnight field trip.
So in front of you, uh, we are asking for the cross-country field trips to be approved since they do involve overnight stay. Going to the wonderful southern part of India.
Do I hear a motion for approval of Morgan Township and Couts cross-country overnight field trips? Moved by Mrs. Starr, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any questions, comments? Sign up and call the question, all those in favor of approval of Morgan Township and Couts cross-country overnight field trips, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six, zero. Next item is H, approval of classified wages.
Sorry, just asking the board approval for an increase in our classified staff. Uh, not in the starting salaries, but, or starting rates, but in the rate, those are right, the last one here.
The material, uh, I'm looking for a motion and a second for approval of the classified wages. Moved by Mrs. Moore, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Starr. Okay, any questions, comments?
Um, I know that we had, um, with transportation, there were some specific questions about, um, drivers that, um, that drive for special needs students. Have you worked into, into about that? It, it's in the, so they did get an increase, okay.
Well, not yet. So we have some work to do for now.
Well, but I just, it's in here, okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Any other questions or comments? It's been moved by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mrs. Starr. All those in favor of approval of classified wages, signify by raising your hand. And that motion passes six, zero. Next item is approval of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six health dental vision premiums for the plans provided by the Quarter County School Employee Insurance Trust.
Mrs. Thompson, I, the Quarter Trust.
Mrs. Thompson, I have the Porter Trust insurance in me, and so they gave us our new rates for this next year, so it'll be a six percent increase in our insurance costs. So we are, we approve these rates as our employer contribution, employee distribution of these plans.
Lot of choices in there. Now I know, but just, okay. I'm looking for a motion and a second for approval of the 2025, 2026 Health Dental Vision premiums for the plans provided by the Porter County School Employee Insurance Trust. Is there a motion?
Provened.
Moved by Mrs. Starr. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Moore. Okay, any questions or comments?
Can you shuffle around? Part of the trust.
The, we can, but it will take us two years to get out of the trust.
Shall we shuffle around?
The, the challenge that we have is, that's kind of a mixed, a mixed bag on that one. Anytime you change insurance, it makes it extremely difficult on the employee. And I know just moving from Anthem to United Healthcare this past year has been a little bit rocky on that. But to look at rates, it is possible to, to do that. We are also trying to find ways to incentivize our people to even move to the surest or to the high deductible, but that's conversations that we will probably have during our bargaining terms because right now we're spending thirty-four thousand dollars a year for a family plan one. And that's even increasing, and even with what we have, it's an extremely rich plan.
Can you define that first? I just want to, the rich, it's extremely...
Comparatively to the state, we are spending more than what the state averages or what the state plan is. And the benefits that our employees get are, some people consider them better than what the average person gets.
I just, I know that especially when that switch happened last October, a lot of the student, or a lot of the teachers have been, just there was a lot of issues with just not being able to get the same care that they got under Anthem, having to pay out of pocket a lot more. So I know that like, at the beginning, I know, I know, I know that we're part of a trust and that this isn't our decision completely, but I just know that there was, there had been a lot of issues and I guess the, the thing that I hear the most of is that the teachers would just rather pay the higher premiums to get better health insurance because they end up paying so much out of pocket, it's not really saving them money. And you're the president of that trust, is that correct?
That is incorrect. I am part, I'm a treasurer.
Okay, okay. So, but that would take two years for us to, I mean, are you, two years to get out of the trust or two years to, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
So you have to give them a two-year notification before you...
But we can stay in the trust and what would be the way, what would be a way for us to advocate to the trust that perhaps the teachers would rather go back to, the staff would rather go back to Anthem?
Well, can I interject just entirely? We have United Healthcare and we have since we moved up here. Initially moving up here, there were not very many providers because many companies didn't use United Healthcare. There are now more providers moving to United Healthcare. So some of the bubbles may have happened as doctors' offices had to get licensed with United Healthcare, realized it was that. Back to my earlier question, we had a rise of six percent this year. Do you recall what it was? And it's fine, thank you John.
Last year?
Yeah.
Well, Anthem wanted, Anthem wanted a sixteen percent increase. However, switching to United, it was more, I think it was closer than seven to eight percent.
Another increase for this time.
Yeah, another thing too, if you pull out the trusts, you're going to be kind of on your own, you're going to have...
There are different, there are different things you can do. You can potentially join other trusts. You could be self-insured, like when I was at Kankakee Valley, we were self-insured. However, I will tell you, they've gone to going into a trust now. Because health insurance right now is just extremely volatile. The biggest challenge that we had though, wasn't necessarily the care, it was more about the prescriptions. And because Anthem and United Healthcare had different script lists that they used. And so most of the, yeah, in different tiers and most of the concerns, there were a couple that had to do with doctors, but the vast majority had to do with different scripts. But I think we've been able to get most of that ironed out now. You're welcome.
Any other questions? And I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the 2025, 2026 Health Dental Vision premiums for the plans provided by the Porter County School Employee Insurance Trust. All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
I'm going to abstain just because I have health insurance.
Okay, one, two, three, four. Eyes, five, nays, zero, and extensions, one. Motion passes five, zero, one. The next item on the agenda is approval of engagement letter for Chris Sears and Zick.
Zick.
And Zick.
Zick. So my recommendation is based on the advice given to us by the district's legal counsel. Based on the complexity and the dynamics of complaints that we have received, they're advising us retain your additional counsel.
So I'll entertain a motion and a second for approval of engagement letter from Chris Sears and Zick. Is there a motion? Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Moore. Okay, questions, comments, discussion?
Would we be replacing Kaminsky, Oates and Anderson with this, this new law firm?
No.
Okay. How would we decide when we'd be using, because they both practice in the same areas, correct? They're early in law.
They can.
Okay. Because I know we have, we also have Lee's Law on retainer as well, but that's more to do with like financials.
That's bonding and property.
So how would we be delineating, I guess, what goes to them, what goes to...
This is simply to look at some of the complaints that have been received and it would just be for this, this particular area, not holistically. Holistically, Kaminsky's firm would still be our schools district. I mean, this is only over the individual, pardon, the series of complaints.
Any questions, comments? Seen none in the call for questions. All those in favor of the engagement letter from Chris Sears and Zick, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries six zero. Now we're going to the closing items and there is any board member discussion?
Good luck on the next year and thank you to all the teachers and staff.
Everyone, thank you. I will pay them that one.
I did have a question. I reviewed the, the video from the last board meeting where there was about a half an hour discussion about athletics and can you let me know the direction that we're going in with that and we were cutting, whether we would cut, like...
Sure.
Are you guys looking at having a policy, like a district-wide policy to cover whether or not we are cutting students from?
No, we are not looking at a specific policy. The board that, the board members that were here, the majority of the board, gave us the inclination and direction not to cut, but come up with some different ideas on how to incorporate students so that they felt like they were, they could be involved. For the varsity teams with the additional people that were on it, basically clearly communicate the expectation or at least the realization that a student may not get very much playing time if any, but they're still welcome to be part of the team, whether it be on the management or simply so that they could still get that. I've got forward to my listening for the legality, the, just the social part that they're looking for. But it was our takeaway that the board members that were present as a whole did not want to look at cuts, so try to find different ways to keep kids involved. So the athletic directors, with that being the direction, are working on ensuring that especially at the middle school, students can find ways to be involved.
Okay, just some of the things that I heard, you know, and I know that, you know, I'm not a varsity coach, never ran an entire program. And I know some of the things that were said at that meeting, you know, with some of our constituents was just kind of, you know, it was like, I believe Ms. McCall said something about like a red card and a green card from kids like playing on different nights and those kind of things. Is that something that you guys were thinking about when we're talking about including, I mean, that's not something mentioned, but...
They, they were just tossing different ideas. There's not been anything that's been designated. Is it possible to have, especially at the middle school level, different kids dressed and show up? Yes. Simply because we don't have enough uniforms for thirty students that come out in that particular park, but that was more geared towards middle school as opposed to varsity.
For a student from a safety aspect though, I just hope we're keeping in mind that, you know, having a hundred kids perhaps like on a team, that's where, you know, it could be a safety issue as well.
That's what our concern was. But we were just following the direction that basically was given to us.
From the board.
But from the, that conversation, yes.
Right, and so my, my concern with that is that none of us are coaches. So is there a reason why coaches weren't brought into that discussion?
That is a conversation between the athletic directors and the coaches.
I think that that would go a long way with having coaches involved in that as opposed to school board members that don't have the experience in coaching. I mean, I coached several sports before, but I've never ran an entire program.
No. Good point. The other thing I, I'm looking forward to opening day, which is coming up. Pretty short.
Monday?
Yeah, yeah, Monday, that's for sure.
But you won't serve in breakfast.
I'll take you to breakfast. So, so when does the agenda, what's happening there? This is snack.
Okay, so that day we are going to be at Morgan Township, Villahigh. We are looking at being in the high school gymnasium. I'm pulling up real quick the agenda that is about to be sent out to you guys. It's set to go after the meeting. At seven thirty till about eight o'clock, we'll have a vendor fair. So our vendors that our teachers work with will be available, answer any questions, hand out information to new teachers or anybody that might be interested in what they provide. Our bands will be there, so our student bands will be performing, students that are available, and we'll be having some donut for them afterwards, that they will be playing a pep band style to welcome our teachers in. We're sort of trying to focus on the main thing, that the main thing, the main thing, and that's our students. And so they'll be welcoming in with some other students helping to do that, slow up the doors and whatnot. We'll start our program. We'll be have about an hour of time together with our program before we dismiss. And our teachers will have some takeaway guides. And the union, we'll have an opportunity to meet with teachers afterwards as the traditional ending as well, with the goal to have our teachers out of there within about an hour of that meeting time. We want to give them time back in their building, to want to kick off the year together, to celebrate and to, you know, focus together on what the really meeting is about this school year, but give them back to their building. So we would love for you to join us. I'll send you this right here. It's set to go here soon. And so you have the agenda and you can help lock them at the doors and, you know, give them a good send off for the school year.
Is, and service awards too, probably?
Yes, we do have service awards. They're in the middle of that, yes.
We'll do our introduction for new staff.
Yes.
It's exciting. It's great. And then we will just, for those of you who are new, we will be asking the board to help distribute the service awards for those of you who will be there. I know some of you will not be able to, you may have other commitments already. Still ask you there.
We think that. Doors will open, we'll be starting kind of at seven thirty. Doors are open before that, just now.
Any other board member discussion? Well, then we go to additional items from the superintendent.
Well, one of the items was to talk a little bit about the fourth, so thank you, or the eleven, today's the fourth. So that helps on that particular part. And just, we are getting ready to start. Currently, we are looking at getting our class sizes set up for kindergarten. We're looking at thirty kids in kindergarten at Couts, forty-seven at Morgan and thirty-six at Washington Township. We do have a monster class in fifth grade, those eighty-seven at Washington. However, as a district as a whole, currently we are about a hundred and seventeen students less than we were last year. We still have, according to the numbers that Mrs. Bynum has sent to me in regards to registration, about ninety-four percent of the students that we had on our books at the range street. So we always know that there could be a couple out there. But in working with our principals, with all of the different ones, right now we have two hundred and eighty-one registered, or two hundred and eighty-one that we're expecting at Couts Elementary, three hundred and four at Morgan, three hundred and sixteen at Washington Township, at the high school, middle school level, three eighty-one at Couts, four fifty-three at Morgan and four sixty-four at Washington Township, which gives us a total right now of two thousand one hundred and ninety-five kids. Last year for our ADM, we were at two thousand three hundred and seven.
Other districts are experiencing the decline too, though, aren't they?
Yeah, they're, they are, and part of our biggest differences between kindergarten and seniors.
So you have some donations here.
We do have, we do. And so we do have one that we want to make sure that we recognize, and that is Ellico Heating and Cooling for the donation of seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and cents to Washington Elementary for the magnet calendars. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Did it ever decide where the shaft is going to be put?
They are still looking at, they, they have not had a finalized, but it will be... Yeah, it is. It, it is going to be on that north side of the fence. What we're trying to figure out is where to have the minimal amount of the fence removed so that we can still maintain it. It's a logical thing. So as that group comes out, initially they were looking at putting it here. There is concern because the track is here, there is concern that an error just might hit that track. But if we do it here, then the challenge is there's the hole. So what they are looking at doing is moving it this way and removing, keeping this part of the fence and then putting like a particle fence, just so that it come out here and have least impact. And then there would be a particle fence that you could put back up when they're playing baseball. So this is probably the option that they are looking at of the main option.
Okay. Well, now I will entertain a motion for adjournment and I'm looking for a second as well. You'll say? I'm looking for a motion. Moved by Mrs. Bowers, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any discussion, questions? Seen none in the call for question. All those in favor of adjournment for this evening signify by raising your hand. That motion passes six zero. That motion passes 6-0. Thank you for entertaining your... Children there are exceptional to, hey, I'm having such a meeting here. They need to get extra credit at school.